I'm sorry?
Yeah, I put the, it's over there, that big folder is a lot of stuff.
I might add this to it.
Alright, yeah, you can just put it in the red folder. Um, Mike, do you know if any of the board members are not coming today? You didn't know? Uh, as well, and as far as the middle, like, my, uh, so. Uh, those were, yeah, they'll have to be, why did you come?
instilled at an early age from his father that hard work pays off. You'll be impressed by his hard work and dedication to learning, growing, and collaborating with others. And Mr. Prasky concludes by saying, "Thank you for welcoming such a promising young man to your program at the University of South Carolina." So Lucas, we'd like to invite you to the podium, to congratulate you, and feel free to say as little as thank you, or tell us a little about, you know, your experience and then your plans at University of South Carolina.
Hello, Board of Education and staff here. I want to thank you first and foremost for inviting me here tonight and for what seems to be a very formal and meeting here. I want to say thank you for having me for these past 14 years. It's been a blast, and although I'm leaving, I want to say it was a very great time being here. As valedictorian, I'm very appreciative of my study and my studies and learning here for these years. It's definitely made me a better person and has taught me many things I don't think I could live life without. Yeah, so.
Thank you, Lucas.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming to be with us tonight. It's wonderful to recognize you, and that was such a lovely letter.
I know, wasn't it? I had to read pieces of it.
That was really lovely, and what a wonderful experience you had. Would you say?
Repeat the speech again.
Oh, yes, I was just about to commend you on your speech. It really stuck in my mind, talking about that time, that length of time, and being mindful of how we use our time.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Excellent.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations, Lucas.
And also, congratulations to your parents for doing such a stellar job with you.
Starts in the home.
Wonderful, thank you so much. All right, we are at this time open to the public on any topic. I don't know, Mom and Dad, do you want to say something too? I kid, I kid, I kid. I was teasing, because there's no other folks here for the folks at home. All right, Dr. Caputo, now I turn over to you after closing that section of the meeting.
I'll make my way to the podium for the district goals.
Wonderful.
Ms. Julik, thanks for having this set up and queued up, ready to go for us. So as we do three times a year, I provide updates to the board and public on how we did this year with our district goals. This is our June 25 final update. Our motto this year was "Better Every Day." We think that really captured the spirit of staff improving every day, students improving every day in the classroom, in the art room, in the music room, on the sports field, and our buildings and the construction getting better slowly each and every day. And that stick-to-it-ness, that slow growth, I think it really marked this 24-25 school year. We, at the beginning of this year, we were looking for frameworks for which to frame our goals. And we found the School Empowerment Network. The School Empowerment Network writes that quality schools do a number of things. We summarize those into five buckets. Quality schools employ rigorous, engaging, and coherent curriculum, offer effective instruction that yields high-quality work, and use curricular-aligned assessments that inform instruction. Quality schools have a clear philosophy and intentional structures for a positive, equitable school culture, and support a culture of learning that includes high expectations. Thirdly, quality schools show clear alignment and intention between resource allocation and the mission, vision, and goals. Quality schools have effective systems to attract, develop, and evaluate staff, and leverage professional collaborations to improve outcomes. And lastly, quality schools have effective structures to evaluate decisions and monitor and accelerate student growth. We really thought this was a high-level framework, and we plan to use this again next year. But before we get to next year, a little summary. How did we measure our progress during the current year? We developed this homegrown system a few years ago, and we've continued to use it. We think that there's some consistency to it. It's a very hard scale to score number five on. Number one means we didn't do it, circumstances prevented us from doing it. Two means there was some progress. It was either minimal or not at the student level. Three is good progress, either we didn't complete the goal, or there was limited impact of evidence at the student level. Four is where a lot of goals top out. That means we did it well, and there's some evidence of impact at the student level. And in a short nine, 10-month period, to get any impact at the student level is pretty good. Five, we reserve for the truly exceptional outcomes. We did it well, and there was significant evidence of impact at the student level. So our first goal, the first focused area, went around that quality schools piece that I read. Our specific goal is to implement rigorous curriculum, effective pedagogy, and assessments that drive adjustments and supports to maximize student learning. We had three key actions. One was collaboration around the revised curriculum guides, interdisciplinary connections. The second was a review of the new AI policy, create a plan, and provide age-appropriate lessons on acceptable use of AI. And in letter C, facilitating student discourse and maximizing instructional time in order to ensure high levels of student engagement. Those were two things we looked for in every single observation done across every school during the school year. So our mean score on that one-to-five scale for focus area one was a 3.92. Just quickly, how that happens, there's three key actions across four schools, so there were 12 things that we scored ourselves. The mean score of those was 3.92. The range was as low as three and as high as five. What I did, I chose evidence, and you'll see this for each focus area. One piece of evidence that I think really captured the essence of the work at the school around the focus area this year. So at Moss, there was a holistic approach to climate, geography, plant and animal needs through the new ELA curriculum, fostering empathy and awareness. At Campbell, our ELA K-5 leaders, our staff leaders, was a real highlight in parent webinars and the events at Kai's Cafe. At Edgar, STEM projects in math, at least two STEM projects in every math class. In science, at least three STEM projects with activities and lessons incorporating, that were incorporated with at least one being climate change-related, and our 21st century classes, at least two STEM projects. At the high school, our 21st century classes collaborated on the construction of a business project connected with digital media, our business and entrepreneurship, and our cooking classes. Potentially, we may launch it with a downtown business next school year, so we're excited about that. Focus area two, the quality school statement is there from the School Empowerment Network. And our goal specifically was to create a positive learning environment that supports high expectations. Four key actions around focus area two. Select and implement recommendations from our parents' partners forum. That's to facilitate collaboration and increase engagement. The second key action was to enhance systems to communicate progress on school and student achievement. Thirdly, mobilize students by leveraging co and extracurricular experiences to foster kindness and connectedness. And the fourth key action was to emphasize character ed through structures for the coordination of sell and supports. This was our highest area this year on our self-scoring system. The mean score is 4.31. The range was also three to five, somebody evidence per school. So at Moss, the kindergarten power hour, that's a general education peers, they push into our self-contained classes around connections, they model pro-social behaviors and build relationships. At Campbell, the Bulldog Buddies program was selected by Character.org, a national organization, as a 2025 promising practice. At Edgar, our character education programs are focused throughout the year. Every month had its own theme. Our school leadership team worked, brainstormed ideas, implemented them, reflected. Changes were made throughout the year, and you'll see those next year as well. At the high school, we're identified through NJ.com as the top public high school in Millsex County. Obviously, communicated that with the parents as well. Focus area three, quality school statement, which I read before is there. Our goal is to dedicate time, resources, and expertise combined with stakeholder input to analyze indicators of success, to see how we're judged, how to make achievements, changes based on that. Key actions, first was to boost achievement in tested areas. There was a particular focus on early ELA, upper elementary, upper elementary and middle math, and entry-level AP courses. We determined that through data, and we wanted to do that through focus PD, supplemental programming, and articulation. B, our second key action in this area is to review accountability data and make shared decisions about the grows and the glows. C was to align instructional approaches and establish common focus areas throughout the department collaboration. And D was to involve community stakeholders in the school improvement initiatives by eliciting their feedback. Two notes before I get to the mean score. The Rutgers Collaboration Survey, which is one of those ones, we didn't do it because it wasn't offered this year. There's a new Rutgers Collaboration Survey under construction between Rutgers, New Brunswick, and Rutgers, the Cornell Institute at Rutgers-Muick, so we're excited to be a pilot for that going into next year. And the NJ SCI survey, the School Climate Improvement Survey, I actually have some district results that I'll share with you on the next slide. The mean score in this area was exactly a 4.00, the range was three to five. Evidence of achievement of this goal, at Moss, grade-level leads, spearheaded team articulation, and curriculum adoption in preparation for full-day kindergarten, which starts now. It's kind of hard to believe, it's been a decades-long vision, starts in a couple months. At Campbell, the SLA and benchmark data reflect pre-COVID levels. At Edgar, New Jersey Sky data analysis has begun. Now, we shared the school leadership team, the school advisory board, and parent advisory board to review and develop focus action plans for improvement. At the high school, additional AP teachers were identified, so they've been enrolled in full-week AP training programs, so they're ready to hit the ground running with their students in September. This is the data that I talked about, I won't read every number. This is part of the slide that Mrs. Alievich has posted or will post. But the New Jersey Sky survey gives us data in a number, I think, 11 domains. Behavioral expectations, academic culture, and classroom practices, negative student interpersonal behaviors, pro-social student behaviors, physical safety, voice and involvement for students, staff-student relationships, supports for student social-emotional learning, family support engagement, collegial support, leadership, organizational resources and supports, and a student's sense of belonging. We got results back from third, fourth, and fifth-grade students, 486 responses. Over 1,000 responses from our secondary students, grade six to 12, 202 responses from staff, and an end number of 384 for parents. And you can see the various scores in the different areas. Some tell us results that we're doing really well, some tell us areas that we need to continue to work on. Focus area four, the quality school statement is there, and our goal is to enhance teacher support, use collaborative structures, and encourage distributive leadership to further develop our district priorities. Five key actions in this one. SLTs to address clear identified initiatives that impact both school outcomes and celebrate achievements. B was to train administrators in equitable hiring practices, incorporating into these practices into the hiring routines. C was develop a statement of commitment, of alignment to a high-performing, inclusive organization. And we'll continue to work on that in '25, '26. D was formalize and communicate current district priorities, and Dr. Herzog led that this year. And letter E was to update our new teacher orientation program and our three-year new teacher program to align with current district priorities. Also, successful outcome from Dr. Herzog's work. Our mean score was 3.65. Because there's an item here that we didn't work on, it was probably resulted in that 3.65 being our lowest, but the range was still three to five in this area. Evidence at Moss was the creation of the SLT, creating social-emotional learning bins, where teachers have resources at their ready. Whole child tenets lens for hiring and recruitment with strong community ties. Campbell, collaboration around a more defined New Jersey tiered systems of support model, as well as a building use that occurs through the SLT subcommittees. There's also dedicated time to plan for the September 26 transition, where Moss will be getting the first and second grades, but Campbell will be getting fifth grade from Edgar. Edgar evidence this year was the SLT worked on the character ed programs, possible schedules for Edgar after realignment, room utilization, as well as school goals for '25, '26. And at the high school, SLT analysis of absenteeism, they're working with their students and parents, and they're creating incentive programs, hopefully that decreases that, and they're going to tie that over the next two years to certain incentives. And focus area five, the quality school statement is there, and the goal is to support student mental health and wellness by enhancing tiered systems of support, specifically to remove barriers to student achievement. Not only to address mental health, but we know that mental health and academic achievement are connected, so not only to address the mental health, but to remove barriers for those students to then see achievement. Five areas, implement the Lifelines Trilogy, that's a comprehensive suicide prevention program, which we did this year. Educate students and staff on wellness and impact of social media. We've done that, we'll continue it next year. Include parent representation on the district mental health leadership team. Dr. Herzog made that happen, and those folks are an important part of our team going forward. Provide PD for our multidisciplinary teams, that's INRS and 504, on these tiered interventions aligned to common areas of need. And to coordinate, communicate steps towards prevention, intervention, and efforts to modify behavior when responding to instances of HIV. Not just to follow the law and determine if HIV had happened and what the consequences would be, but to modify behaviors going forward. Our mean score was 3.85, the range was threes, fours, and fives. Evidence at Moss, quality job embedded coaching data with the RTI teacher and elementary supervisor. At Campbell, morning meeting content that helps students identify strategies for managing emotions and social situations. At Edgar, we focused on prevention, and 76 sixth graders participated in Lifeline Trilogy lessons this year. And at the high school, accountable was read by the English department, and they've made the recommendation that that becomes an adoption for the 10th-grade curriculum going forward. We also value the ASCD whole-child tenets, because we believe that students should be safe and healthy, engaged, and supported, and challenged, and there should be a plan for sustainability of those tenets going forward. We talked about this back in August. I didn't give updates along the way, but promised at the end I would align this. So we took our five focus areas, I just went over those, aligned the focus areas to healthy, safe, engaged, supportive, challenging, and sustainable indicators from the whole child tenets, where there's direct alignment to our goals, and then averaged those scores across each tenant. So we found that this year, the healthy tenants, 1, 2, 6, and 7, fell into focus area five, and that's a 385 in that area, same one-to-five scale. On the safe tenant indicators, 3, 4, 6, and 7 aligned with our second focus area, 9 aligned with our third focus area, and number 10 aligned with the fifth focus area. And a 4.18 was the score, our highest score is in safe this year. The engaged indicators, 1, 6, 7, 9, and 10 aligned directly with our focused area number one, giving us a 3.92. The supported indicators were aligned across multiple focus areas. Indicator 6 aligned with our first focus area, 3, 4, 6, and 10 aligned with focus area two, 9 aligned with number four, and 4 aligned with number five. 409, another score above four in that area. Our challenge indicators fell into focus area one with a 3.92 score. And our sustainability indicators, 4, 9, and 10 aligned with focus area three, and indicators 1, 2, and 8 aligned with four, for an average score of 3.83 in that area. And those are weighted areas, taking those focus areas I just went over and finding the number of tenants that fell. I worked on a weighted indicator for those scores. So we're happy to keep the whole child tenets at the forefront, and this was a sort of mathematical way to keep those whole child tenets at the forefront. And that's my presentation for tonight. I'll take questions if anyone has them. You're welcome.
It's always great to see our goals articulated and supported with then data to outline how we've implemented them across the course of the year. So we're always appreciative of this very thorough presentation. So questions from my colleagues, comments, observations? Mr. Suss is making his way back.
Yes, just want to echo appreciation for having, putting numbers. In particular, the numbers for the New Jersey climate survey.
Yes.
Do you break it down by school? I mean, these are general numbers, so like, you know, love it, hate it, certainly, for example, let's pick one. Let's see. Family support and engagement. So at, you know, two of the schools, you know, disagreement, you know, either strongly disagree or disagree, was less than 20%. One of the schools, it was way over 20%. I mean, do you try to understand why, or?
Yeah. So each school is set up with a data team. We all went to trainings for that. Each school has this data team, which helped implement the survey. And as soon as we got the results back, those data teams began diving in. So while that's happening at each school level, each school is also offering parents an opportunity to join those. Each principal, all four principals sent that out to their staff. Also, we're offloading some of the results to various supervisor departments, teams, as well as various committees that we have that are already set up to work these things. So we're going to attack that from three perspectives. The school data team, the parent advisory group that's been created or leveraged their own current parent advisory group, and the offloading of some of the results to work on to department supervisors or to existing committees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suss. Any other questions, comments, folks?
I had a question on the Lifelines Trilogy lessons at Edgar School. It's great that 76 sixth graders participated. Are there plans to scale that to the other grades? And if you could talk a little bit more about that, it'd be helpful.
So the plans going forward, well, those will be lessons in grade six, nine, and 11. Is that right, Dr. Herzog? Six, nine, and 11. So yeah, so all of our students in grade six, nine, 11 will get those this year. The pilot was the students that had the health class in a certain marking period when we were ready after our training to implement that. So going forward, all sixth, ninth, and 11th graders will get that training.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Jada. Any other questions or comments, folks? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Caputo. All right, and at this time, I'm supposed to give a report of some sort, but, you know, it's hot out there, folks. Happy summer, we wished for, and here it is with full force. And I am assuming, since you just gave such a thorough report, you don't have another report?
Nothing further.
All right, wonderful. So we turn at this time to committee reports. I know that Construction did have a meeting with the public, so I turn to you, Mr. Glassberg.
Yes, Construction met on June 16. That meeting started with a portion that's open to the public. We received an overview of the progress at all four schools, so here it is in brief. At Matutian High School, the entire project is expected to be completed by the first week of December. Structural steel is nearly complete in the new gym area. Interior and rough mechanical are progressing well. The cafeteria addition is complete. That's the portion that's temporarily being used as a Board of Education office. The switchgear, which is electrical components, is expected to arrive mid-July. At this point, we're on track for mid-September at the high school for air conditioning. And then there would be some additional work in the new cafeteria as they converted over from the temporary Board of Ed usage to cafeteria usage when the administration moves to the new space. At Moss, expected completion of Moss for December 1, but we are on track for full-day kindergarten to start at the beginning of September. Masonry and plumbing has progressed well. Transformer should be installed next week, so that might actually be installed at this point. Electricity should be fully working there in the coming weeks. Site work completion by the end of summer is expected. We took some comments and questions from the public who were there. There were questions related and comments related to traffic on Simpson and Amboy, and the ability of public who lives on Simpson to be able to get in and out depending upon the time of the arrival or departure of students. There was a question and comment regarding the playground location at Moss. The bus and car loops were also discussed, with the cars coming in off of Hunt, right? And the buses coming in off of Simpson, and in and out of those same places. At Edgar, completion is expected August 7, so very soon. That includes air conditioning. There is some switchgear that will need to be replaced in the wintertime, but there's temporary gear that will allow for the air conditioning to be ready. At Campbell, completion expected by September 1. We are waiting, or we're waiting, for PSENG to set a particular pole that's needed. So we'll await an update in that area. And we do want to let you know, of course, that in all of this, despite the dates that we're giving, this is in motion. Things can cause setbacks. Also, once equipment is all up and running in the beginning, it does take some time to get it right and figure out what's working and what's not working as ideally as we expect it to. So we do encourage people to be patient with the school administration as they go through that process in the beginning part of the school year. You've been, the public's been extremely patient so far with this large construction project, and we ask for just a little bit more time there. In the closed session time of the meeting, we discussed change orders for both Epic Construction Company and M&amp;M. Currently, both of their change orders that have been approved are below the threshold and all within the budget that we currently have set, although we're monitoring that closely. And we also discussed the removal of the soil outside of Matutian High School. You probably see a large pile out there by the construction site, so that was also a topic that we discussed. Our next meeting is closed to the public on July 21. The following meeting that is open to the public is August 18 at 7:00 PM in the Matutian High School Air Condition Library Media Center. And also, the committee, the Construction Committee, will be at the farmer's market on August 16, Saturday, August 16. So you could stop by and say hello and see the update on the plans. We'll have some visual images there, and you could talk to us or ask questions at that point as well. That's the end of my report, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glassberg, and I will echo your compliments to our community for their patience, space, and grace, as Mr. Bott would say, as we undergo this really, truly, like, once-in-a-generation transformation to our schools. It's going to be amazing to behold when it's done. So thank you all for your patience and time. All right, next up, we have extracurricular, Ms. Colleen?
Extracurricular met June 16. It was, only had a couple items to discuss. We reviewed a proposal for the Edgar Literary Magazine Club, which the committee was very supportive of. We reviewed the final report of the spring season. One of the conversations that we had there was that we were monitoring the numbers in different sports, where we're seeing some increases, some declines, and paying attention to the ratio of coaches to athletes in each of those sports. That led into a discussion on clubs and activities. One of the topics for an upcoming meeting, we'll look at club participation for the school year that just closed, as well as a preview for the school year that's about to come. And one of the conversations that was part of that was that, looking at reorganization, it's going to be important to discuss which clubs and activities we're running at Moss now for the first time. We haven't really had that happening before. A lot of the clubs have been happening at the Campbell level, but now have older students down at Moss, it might be appropriate to have some clubs and activities there. So that'll be important to consider when we're budgeting for the '26, '27 school year. And that does it. Our next meeting is July 14 at 9:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Colleen. All right, turning to you, Mr. Suss, for finance.
Yes, we met on the same day. First, we reviewed an email from our insurance consultants regarding property and casualty coverage. We're going to have an expert come at our next meeting to discuss it. We reviewed the budget and capital reserve analysis for the next few years. We talked about a technology audit that took place. We talked about a safety grant that we received that will be applying to our energy management program and mold prevention. And we talked about transportation. In particular, last year, we had, you were able to pay for busing in installments, in two installments. Unfortunately, some parents did not pay their second installment. So the district is short $5,000. We decided that if you don't pay that installment, you will not be able to ride the bus in the '25, '26 school year. And we talked about parents who lived outside of busing boundaries, whether they would be eligible for busing or not.
All right, thank you, Mr. Suss. Were there any questions or comments on any of the reports? All right, seeing none. We'll proceed along. Any old business from the board? Any new business from the board? All right. All right. At this time, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings on June 10, 2025, Special Business Meeting 1, Special Business Meeting 2, and the board meeting. Is there a second? Mr. Derslinger. Rule call, please, Ms. Aliyevich.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Derslinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich. At this time, the meeting is open to the public for any topic. Seeing none, I'll close that section of the meeting. At this ti... I always get tripped up here. Sorry, folks. We move to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the Superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and the Superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move the personnel items A1 through 26 with the addition of item A27, in which we accept the resignation of Campbell teacher Sophia Lopes. Is there a second? Mr. Bott? Rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Derslinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And at this time, Dr. Kaputo, you have a commentary?
Just an excerpt from a letter that Ms. Lopes wrote to us. "I'm incredibly grateful for my time in Matutchen. The district has played a significant role in my growth as an educator, and I sincerely appreciate the many opportunities I was given to learn and develop professionally. Thank you again for everything, your support, the opportunities and relationships I built here in Matutchen will always hold a special place in my heart."
Thank you, Dr. Kaputo, and I will say, especially given our district's collaborative model, some of us have been on committees where we've seen Ms. Lopes join us as a part of that collaborative model, and she will indeed be missed in our district. All right, did the rule call. All right, next, we're moving on to Mr. Suss. I'm sorry, there's a lot of items. Mr. Suss, finance.
A lot of items, indeed. I'd like to move items B1 through B47 as listed on the agenda.
I should start scrolling now, right? Is there a second? Dr. Spigner, any questions or comments, folks? All right, rule call, please. Ms. Aliyevich?
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Derslinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, Dr. Spigner, policy items.
Sure, I'd like to move items C1 through C11 as listed on the agenda, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Bott? Any questions or comments on the policy items? All right, seeing none, rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Derslinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Mr. Derslinger, curriculum?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move items D1 through 3 as listed on the agenda, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Colleen? Thank you. Questions or comments on the curriculum items? Seeing none, rule call, please. Just kidding. Mr. Suss?
So I guess one of the items is the ski trip. I guess that's back.
Yes, we're asking for approval for that February trip from Ms. Giren and Ms. Sarmak and Ms. Youngman, probably another chaperone. We estimate 40 or 50 students on that trip.
Okay. I guess it was back, it was not back, but I guess...
Yeah, I mean, it's through our outdoor education, and I think they picked different activities, and we've had good success with that club, and it's pretty popular. Our chaperones, the advisors of the club, are pretty experienced, and I'm comfortable with the trip and hope that, you know, if it's approved, that students sign up and enjoy that weekend in Killington.
Any other questions or comments on the curriculum items for this evening? All right, seeing none, rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Derslinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson-Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty. At this time, the meeting is open to the public, but similarly, seeing none, I close the section of the meeting and turn right to Mrs. Cheatham for the announcements. Well, given that school is not in session, I do not have any announcements. Thank you. But when is our next meeting? That's the question. You got me.
Actually, Dr. Kaputo...
I can help you.
It's July 22, I feel like.
Yes, July 22.
All right, I got you.
Do we want to remind rising fifth graders and ninth-grade parents that they need to reregister?
Yes, so they've been contacted a number of times. Thank you for the reminder. We have six dates in the summer, including a Saturday. All fifth and ninth-grade students, whether they've just moved here or they've been here since pre-K, have to reregister, and we make the process very simple. We have a staff of people that are experienced, they've done it a number of years now. Again, six times to meet everyone's schedule, nights, days, weekend, about five to 10 minutes maximum, bring the right stuff, they'll have you in and out, and we'll make sure that everyone that's supposed to go to school here in Matutchen is going to school here.
And where do they come? Over here?
Yeah, I don't, it's at the high school. I don't have that in front of me right now, but we can certainly reshare that information tomorrow with the community.
Thank you.
Ms. Aliyevich will put that in the Wednesday-after-Tuesday community notes.
Wonderful, thank you. Good reminder, Mr. Suss, thank you.
One more annoying reminder.
Oh, just kidding.